Anyway, sorry. So the for the month of July, our report is a little better than previous months. We had 6,734,100 gallons, which has dropped considerably. Our average daily flow was 217,230 gallons.
Now, how could that be?
Well, we received 6.3 inches and our plant capacity is at 72% now. Few different things, the weather, even though we did have rain, it's been dry and that water gets soaked up in the ground instead of actually going in. So it shows us that we have some infiltration problems. And you also looked at the flow meter reading reports for Homestead. We went from 214,005 gallons per day in June to July, it dropped down to 132,686 gallons per day. So we've dropped a considerable amount of flow. There's only a couple of things that could attribute to that. I mean, the dry weather does help. But I'm wondering if it the changes they did to the lift station there too. Remember me talking last month, we had that alternator that wasn't working properly. So I don't know if the pumps were just running way more than they were supposed to and now they're shutting off more. I don't know.
That's 80,000 gallons because I've been saying for six months, the whole reason I want another engineer is because we went up 80,000 gallons of flow in six months.
Right.
So I want an engineer to tell me why that happened. Sean, you're an operator and you shouldn't have to figure that out.
I mean, I can tell you where part of it was because Homestead dropped down considerably. So it could have been your lift station doing that. I don't know unless there's been a mass exodus from Homestead. Have you seen a bunch of people moving out? Okay, then so.
Maybe even some new move in.
Well, we really have a really have an issue where we had a big flow like ground and water or something else being added. We've gone ahead and fixed it. We had a.
Yeah, we did fix all that. I mean, you can only find so much like there's still, we still have some lateral lines in Homestead that I need to determine whether we can even fix those or whether that's a homeowner or what. That's something we got to figure out. But as far as our lines go, I mean, we're still reviewing footage, but we're not seeing anything major.
Okay.
What about this infiltration? You said we might have infiltration issues. So that's the alternator thing you were saying?
No, the alternator thing is it alternates the pumps at the lift station, the Homestead lift station. The way it works is when we have three pumps in, it will alternate from pump one to pump two to pump three. So you get equal wear on them.
So then we got now we have two of the three.
That's where the problem lies is we had two pumps and we had an alternator for three pumps. So somehow they weren't jiving right. And we've had BBC out a couple of different times trying to figure out what's going on and they replaced that alternator this last month. That's the only other difference that has happened that can show me that I can point to of why we've dropped off so much flow.
And the third pump is $80,000.
Yeah, we don't have that right now. We just have the two, but they put an alternator in there for two pumps instead of three.
Gotcha.
So I don't know if the previous alternator was telling one pump is to run nonstop or what. I mean, we check it every Friday and we, you know, we do our normal checks. There's no way to know when it's running, when it's, I mean, you know, I know if it's running while we're there, but not really.
But how do you measure the volume of the fact that the pump is running and it's supposed to pump so much?
Yeah, I mean, it just, it just pumps. We've got a flow meter that tells us what the flows are coming from there. But I mean, it's, it's on a float system. Well, that one's not. It's on a multi-trade type thing.
Sure.
Fog rod that tells the water level goes on and tells it when to come on and off. But the relay has something to do with that too. When it alternates, it switches from pump to pump. And something was screwed up with that because it was a three pump relay and they only had two pumps. So I don't know that that's necessarily the culprit of this, but I just know that's the only change and that's the difference in flows.
What are their flows from Hendricks County? Has, can you tell me where that's at really quick? Has that gone up or down or anything?
Not off the, I don't think so. I think it's been pretty much the same. Yeah.
What?
I looked at the flow.
Is that going up? Is that what you mean?
No, but I thought you were asking about the flows, Sean, like what's provided the revenue.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
No, I don't think the flows have changed much from then. I didn't notice anything different.
Would that be on your flow thing you sent us?
No, that's just Homestead only.
Okay.
These sheets are just Homestead.
Will you get me the flows for the last month on that?
Ricky emails them to me every month. I look at them and I didn't notice anything crazy. So no big differences, I should say. They look the same as it does every month.
Okay.
Yeah. But whatever the calls, our flows are way down now. So. I mean, I, the only thing I can point to is Homestead. And then so our treatment removals were all really good. Oh, well, one thing too, we did waste a lot this month. So the 227,000 gallons is from us wasting because we had our digester and our sludge holding tanks pumped out. So I had plenty of room to waste. So we did remove, there's where part of that flow went this month. We were good on all of our limits. We did have two ECO live violations. They allow us one again. I don't think it's going to be a huge red flag for my dam hopefully, but we did have one technically.
Even though we did all that pumping?
Well, that UV system is hanging on by a thread. We need a new UV system.
Is that part of the upgrade?
Yes. Oh my God, yes.
What? What is taking so long with all these contractors getting things done?
Apparently they don't know how to bolt a generator to a slot. I don't know.
Well, the other thing is we right now, we, an organizational thing and the reason why I want to do this meeting is we haven't had anybody watching that. So Marion was transitioning into her position. There was six months without anybody watching over it. So we are going to put all the players in one room and come up with some accountability because right now we are part that we need to own is that we're not requesting that they stay on target. You know, Sean runs his own company, so there's only so much we can count on him to do.
You're waiting on AES to drop their, and put their new power lines in?
Yes.
Okay. So they're going to kind of change the transformer that's sitting out there? Or, or are they, are they going to run on two transformers? Okay. So they're going to put a new transformer in and then run lines?
We're going to run on our backup generator, our new backup generator, which we get fuel tomorrow. And then they scheduled, I think it's next Wednesday for the startup guy to come out and do the startup of the generator. Generator's good. I mean, once that's all done, we should be fine. Then we tell AES, we have our backup generator in service. It's ready to go. So AES, they say they can do it in a day. They, we had a meeting about it and everything. They say they're going to send out 20, 30 guys and AES are a huge company. But they're going to dig the trench. They're going to drop the new transformer and hook it all up in one day and we'll be on backup generator power for a day, which is fine. I mean, that don't matter to us.
And the building, you said, we need to, Marion, this is very important.
Yeah, for some reason I found out from the electrical contractors out there and one of the many times they pulled me away and asked me questions and having me do stuff for them. But the guy I asked said, do you realize that the lab building and office buildings are not going to be powered by the backup generator? I said, no. I said, it used to be. I mean, why would that change? So I don't know. That's the way they designed it. It's not going to have any backup generator power.
So can you reach out to Lou about that, please?
I don't know why you wouldn't.
It makes no sense.
Right there. I mean, I don't get it.
Well, of course, you know, that's going to be a different power and you'll have to have a step down transformer.
Yeah, but they already have a step down transformer to power my air compressors and my other stuff that's, that's low voltage. So why wouldn't they just hook a breaker in and run the building through? I mean, I don't, I don't get it.
Well, the cables were already there.
I know. Everything's right there. So why?
Somebody just didn't write it up correctly.
So, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, you're probably right. You're probably absolutely right. I think there's people involved in this that are on their way out the door and just don't seem to.
They have to rebuild a room or.
No, they screwed up on building the room because it was just, it's, oh my gosh.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's wrap up our.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I will say once again, they've been with us for 20 years and they've done amazing things and Lou has been putting in as many hours as you have and in this CTA even more hours because he's, you know, this is all him in the CTA. So as frustrated as we are at some things, I'm very grateful for all the other work that they're doing.
Right.
And one of the things is they have like six things going for us right now. So we just need to get a little focus.
Yeah. So, okay. So to move on, also with discussing with the gentleman from I D M, I forget his name right now. But he said that, you know, with the engineering thing, but we don't have spill containment. They told him we did. We don't for our chemical feed pumps. So he stressed that we need to get spill containment from them. Just so you guys know, I'm getting quotes for that. And it's something as simple as like, I don't know how much they are, but it's just like a skid thing. They set the chemical tote in, keeps it from spilling. So it's one of the other things I discussed if we're talking about engineers and all that. Okay. So we completed the July flow meters readings for Homestead. You guys have that. We just went over that. Homestead station is still operating efficiently. Again, we did have the problem with our alternating relay working correctly and they did get a new one in there. We're still reviewing us hydro vac video of cleaning and televising the Homestead's sections one through five. The new flow meter in the school, at the school has been installed and is operational and ready to start getting readings. When the technicians were out there, so this is something I need you guys to kind of direct me on what you want us to do here. The technician stated that the flow channel was clogged during installation several times and had to be cleaned out for the flow meter to work properly. It was clogged with vapes amongst other debris. The technician recommends that the channel be checked and cleaned daily to keep accurate readings. So we put the more expensive flow meter in there so that we could get the reading once a month, but he's saying we need to probably get that daily and clean that out from all the kids flushing their vapes and all their crap. Which brings me to the subject of State Road 42 lift station. We're constantly getting clogged pumps out there and I'm sure that's what it is.
Coming from the school.
Can we put some kind of filter on them that they have to clean?
No. The thing we could do, and this, this was my thought, you guys direct me on how you want us to go about it. You guys have had us getting flow readings at Homestead every day. You guys already pay us to do this. Knowing what's going on at Homestead and the readings we're getting, do you, would it be better to get flow readings there and just average them once a week or once a month? And then we can go to the school because you're going to be billing the school depending on their flow readings and do it daily? And then there'd be no price change? I mean, we wouldn't charge anything differently?
I'd bill them to clean it up.
And if we're cleaning that out every day and if it is that bad, it wasn't just an odd day, we can start taking pictures and sending it to the school and say, hey, look, you guys, this is only comes from you. It doesn't come from anybody else.
If, yeah. I know down in Martinsville, they were having a lot of problems with the jail and banks putting their uniforms such down through there and clogging all the lift stations and such.
And sheets and pillowcases and everything.
And anyway, I don't remember exactly what transpired, but the, the jail had been put in filtering systems or something like this to be, well, it's, it's like the screening system that you have going into the, and.
Yeah. Yep. It's like what we have at the plant, but they put it there.
And so, you know, if we have it in something like that for the school, it's supposed to.
That would be very costly.
That would be their cost.
And that would be expensive to school.
Right. I mean, that would be a very costly solution. It'd have to be across from Tammy's office where the flow meter and that's where all that comes through.
And, you know, of course, you know, let's, you know, that would have to go back towards the aggression, football aggression area, but we have to have something like that to, to resolve the problems because.
Right.
If we didn't filter it somehow, it just would cause more problems for us down the road.
Yeah, that's already doing it. It's clogging our pumps on 42.
I mean, what, what do we need the Homestead flows for? Like, why were you guys doing it every day?
Originally, we started doing that for, because of the high infiltration, the high flow readings, we were trying to figure out where it was coming from. And we all suspected Homestead because there's a lot of homes in there that are supposed to be single family dwellings that have multiple families living in them. So that was the original intent of us doing the flow meter reading because we have our portable town on flow meter. We installed it there and we started, because we originally we did Hendricks County and we were checking their flows and their flows were pretty much exactly to what we were getting. So they were accurate. So then we switched to Homestead to see what we were getting from them. And that's when we started finding out we were getting over 200,000 gallons a day just from Homestead.
So is that what you want to do? You want to focus on them for a little while? And I think that's, I mean, I think we could do it for a few months and see how it's going.
It's totally up to you guys. I mean, I'll do what you want me to do.
Whatever comes out of there.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, we can clean it out and put it in a bucket and we'll take pictures and document it. I know that I have other clients that are schools and these vapes and the stuff that these kids flush, it's a serious problem at a lot of places. It's not.
Because it's hard plastic.
Yeah, it's, no, I know.
Exactly.
And it tears pumps up. It causes a lot of damage. So.
And they're on a grinder too, right?
No.
I thought they were down, they had, oh, that's the lift station. Nevermind.
No, it goes straight up across from your office and runs down 42 to our lift station. And that seems to be the one that gets clogged at least once a month, but I gotta go and run it backwards or whatever to get it unclogged again. And what most likely happens, vapes are in there and it's shoving them out and then after a few weeks, it sucks it back up again.
So you'll go ahead and make that change. I think that's.
Yeah, if that's what you guys would like to do, we can do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. And then, and then depends upon the volumes that you'll have to talk to the school about, about the fact that so much trash coming through that they're going to have to do something.
Well, we'll have evidence.
Well, yeah, we'll have evidence and there should be something in your serial use ordinance. I'd have to look through it, but I believe your serial use ordinance does state that you can charge for that kind of stuff. I'll have to pull it. It's at the plant. I haven't read that.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Check that out. Absolutely.
Okay.
They know that they've known, because as an educator, schools know vapes are a problem, but they may not be likely that big.
Yeah.
Right.
You may be making them aware that it's a bigger problem than what they think it is.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So on the next project, Merrill Brothers completed the solids removal at the treatment facility. Everything should be done and over with. So we'll be starting at some point here soon on doing that overflow tank, if you guys still wish us to do that. And then also I set the approval of our spare parts for all our lift stations to torque and they've got them altered and they should be. The only other thing I had was GIS. I had a thing. I wanted to go over that with you guys real quick. Basically, this is just for your knowledge and I just want to make sure that the board doesn't just approve IMGIS whenever our contract's up with them or whatever to continue on doing any, anything extra for the town. We want just the bare minimum from them because on this, if you look, when they put their data in, they'll put manholes and stuff where the prints show them. But that's not where the actual manhole is. And if we do a locate on that, you know, they kind of locate it and they say, okay, well, the manhole says it's out in the street. You're good in your yard. Here in Homestead, there's no manhole there. Guy goes and digs his yard up to put a birdhouse or anything. He hits our sewer line. We got sewage going everywhere. I gotta fill out spill response I D M. We could be liable for fixing and repairing it for not being located correctly according to our GIS. I mean, there just comes a lot of hassles with this.
Okay, who is GIS?
IMGIS. They are, they supply our mapping system for all of our sewer lines and assets for the town. We use their, their program, their, their information, their computer program. But when they do data entry, they'll get prints from whoever, developer, whatever, and they just scan them and put them in. They don't actually come out to the field and, oh, that manhole's not here. It's over here. They don't do that. We do. They'll do it, but they'll charge you like $200 some dollars an hour to send a guy out here. So I just don't want us putting in false information. I mean, it's in our program, but we, we blinded out so nobody sees it. They see our data instead of their data. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. And I just don't want anybody entering another contract with them in the future. Once this one's expired, giving them full access to do whatever they think we need. We just want the bare minimum from them. We just want the program. That's it.
And Pat would charge an hourly fee to go ahead and make sure that they are where they're supposed to be.
Right.
And is this a requirement by state statute that we do this or why, why are we doing this?
A lot, everybody does it. So I don't know if it's a requirement by state statute, but it's just, it makes sense to have all your assets in a mapping system like this. So stuff like that doesn't happen. When someone's wanting to dig and they have to call 811 or whatever, they can pull up your IMGIS information, see what your sewer lines are, see where your force, so that they don't hit them.
But they, they still come out and mark them though. If somebody's actually going to dig.
No, someone comes out, but they use your mapping system to determine where they're at.
So, so this mapping system like over here with the lots you have as well too, you've got the blue lines and you've got the red line. So the red ones that Pat drew, drew, are those are the correct ones? The blue lines are just something provided by county? I mean.
I don't know.
Are they using this?
The, the blue lines is your water lines, I believe.
No, 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 no.
I don't know if he has that. I believe it is on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've discussed how the mapping for the lot lines.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that at all. The parcels and lot lines, I, I could care less about that. I mean, that's, that's something you guys use or somebody uses.
But that's something that Donald has been trying to, where at the end, when the developer gets all that information in and he can go to the county, he can up call it and they put it in there.
And that's fine. I, I don't have a problem.
You'd think the county would have accurate records since they do all the surveying and everything.
Well, they do on the lot lines. They're pretty accurate.
Well, no, I'm talking about sewer lines and manhole lines and our assets like that. I'm not really talking about property like, because a property line, that's just, you know, neighbors arguing about where the property, I don't care about that. That's not sewage on the ground. That's not a spill that's going to cause people sickness and harm and.
It could create a serious emergency. I'm just wondering what that serious emergency would be.
Spilled sewage?
Okay, all right.
You got sewer running down in your, your front yard. You're not going to be happy with it.
But if he does without calling?
Well, I mean, but well, yeah, you shouldn't be digging without calling, but if they call and they, they go off of IMGIS manhole, says it's in the street, the guy's going to go in the yard. Oh, no manhole and going to leave. He's not even going to look because it's supposed to be in the street. And then when the guy digs his yard up and hits a sewer line, we're going to be held liable because our system said there wasn't a manhole or a line there. That's what I'm getting at. I just want to make sure that our stuff's accurate and that we're not just.
But we pay somebody to come out and actually mark where things are, right? Like that comes to us, the bill for 811. So they would be the one held accountable, just to make sure we're all accurate.
No, I think you're saying Northern Lights uses that data. Garbage in, garbage out.
Right.
And, and they're using the data he's referring to when they mark.
Right.
What's our agreement with this GIS companies today?
Huh?
What's our, our agreement with the GIS?
It's almost completed anyway. I think they, the IMGIS is Homestead and Stone Bay.
Oh, that's Stone Bay and for some reason Eagle Point was in there.
Yeah.
The development that's, we don't know if it's going to happen there or not, but we've already paid for it.
Yeah, it's already paid for. So I'm not saying change anything. I'm just saying.
When it comes up for renewal.
Yes.
That we only you get the base agreement.
Base agreement with.
We don't want them putting in this, the utility data.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
I'm just curious what it says about errors because we can't have other entities relying on who we contract with that gives bad information to homeowners because then the liability line just, it, I mean, it just goes down.
Trying to mitigate that by having Pat go ahead and do that.
State law says three feet. So technically, if you want to get technical, the manhole they're saying is in the street. It's probably exactly three feet from the one in the yard, but that's, so yeah, they have a way out, but that's not going to help the homeowner who digs up their sewer line and sewage is going everywhere, calls me and says, hey, there's sewage in my yard because you guys don't have the right locate.
And Pat can go out there, make sure who knows where they all are and go ahead and document them and so they'll always be where they're supposed to be.
Who's Pat?
He works for us. He's our, he's our collection system guy. He does our lift stations, our sewer lines. He does all the GIS mapping. He does a first full-time job too at Avon. He works part-time. He's only here Fridays.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. I just didn't want anybody entering into a new contract with me. But thinking of that first.
All right.
That's all I got. Sorry. Thank you.
How's your rear in Cora? From sitting so long tonight. This is long meeting. Um, so I'm going to go kind of fast hopefully. So we talked with, um, a, several people about a na, a national fitness campaign and a fitness center at the park. And we've had two meetings since we originally talked to them. And they came out in a hall, was supposed to get this fitness center and then they decided they couldn't get it because of had something to do with their insurance that wouldn't cover it. So they got grants for it. They had $180,000 worth of grants approved to them. And so they presented it to us in hopes that the grants could kind of be migrated over to us if this is something that we would be interested in. So, um, one of our board members, John Hayes, went to Bloomington because IU just built one. They haven't even opened it up yet. They were working on it when he went in. He's like, hey, can I check this out? So they let him come in and look at it. He went in and looked at it. So he brought a nice video of, of one here in Indiana for us to see. It's really a nice little fitness center. It's basically kind of like, if you've ever been to a gym that has those circuit workout areas where you go from one equipment to another, maybe a little workout. It's kind of like that, but it's outdoor mat. And so it's really nice. The health department, is the health department correct?
Morgan County.
Morgan County Health Department had part of the grant was $150,000 that they were going to do. Their grant cycle has already, has already closed. And so they came to our last meeting, her name's Tricia. She came to our last meeting and she was taking it to their, her boss to see if they would just for us to allow us to apply for Hall's grant. So an email was sent to you. Mary Ann just showed me before the meeting that said that they have approved for us to get that grant with us filling out some more paperwork based on our statistics and our, our stuff. So with your guys' approval, now this is, yes.
That's awesome.
You're just a show off, Donald Jones.
I think.
Yeah. So with your guys' approval, there would be, and Tammy was at the original meeting, park board meeting. There would be some money that we would have to raise to put into this. And, um, but, but again, the lady from Hall, her name was Nikki. She had already looked at different grants that could be utilized to get the rest of the money. So we could look at other grants to get the rest of the money for it. So.
The total project was 250, is that right?
Yes.
Or was it 270? I couldn't remember.
It was 250. Yeah. So depending on what we. Yeah, so depending on what we did, it was 256, I believe, is what they were saying on average. Um, yeah, 256, because we would have to lay, part of that is we'd have to lay a concrete pad. And, um, they had a large amount for the concrete pad. But, um, what you're seeing there is just a, a portion. The 170 that Lori just said is, so you can get just this one side that you just saw, and then there was another side that's the same size. So you could double it, and it would be, um, that. So you could do yoga class, or you could have someone come in and do a dance class. So it would be a matted area, so people could come in and do classes, fitness classes.
Just a playground.
Yeah. So, or you could just get the one, the one side that's got the equipment on it. So the one se- between 170 and 250 depended on whether or not you went with the full-size court, or, or the two courts, or just the one court.
Wow.
I have a quick question, because John Hayes brought up an excellent point that night. He said it seems like a lot of money for this, you know, forty by whatever square.
Yeah, it's, um, the smaller one is thirty-eight by thirty-eight, and the bigger one is seventy-six by thirty-eight.
I absolutely love that you could do, like, you know, Zumba or whatever. Um, but if the, if Morgan County is going to give us taxpayer dollars, are the, is it only for this project, or could we use it for your track?
Well, we asked that at the last meeting. She was like, well, if we could use it for our track, we would prefer to do the trail, because that's what we have said all along would be our next step. And she let us believe that they want this somewhere in, they want this somewhere in Morgan County. They would like it to be here, because it started with Hall.
And Martinsville's getting one.
I was gonna say, is this the only one, or?
They, they want.
Where are they gonna put it in Hall?
They want this.
Probably at the school.
Yeah.
Was it? Okay. I didn't, I didn't pay any attention.
Yeah. They had it all planned out. They had it all worked out. And then, um,
They were gonna have to come up with like eighty grand.
It had some, no, it had something to do with their insurance.
Hall?
Their insurance wasn't gonna cover. So it had something to do with their insurance.
I don't think they had other developments like we do, so they didn't have insurance.
Right. So they don't have, yeah. So they didn't have the insurance, like, they don't have the insurance. Yeah, they don't have the insurance. Like, we have the insurance for the park already. They didn't have that. So they didn't have that to cover it. And they said, whoa, that's gonna cost us too much to continue doing that. So.
It would have been the Hall Civic, Hall Civic Association that was doing it.
Oh.
At the school, at the.
Oh, it wasn't town.
Yeah, 'cause I was thinking, unless the county was just doing it for the county and just putting it in Hall.
'Cause we, 'cause, 'cause that's, we were like, well, can we get this grant and use it for our track? And she was like, this is what it was, what it was put aside for. This is what the Department of Health put it, just put aside for, and this is what they're, would be willing to open it back up to us for.
At one time, we talked about maybe using park funds to our, the funds we get from the new houses?
No, we can't use that for this.
Okay, but you were gonna get a sheet of paper that showed why, why we were able to use that for? Did you ever?
No, I totally forgot about that. I was gonna ask Steve.
Do you know why we're looking for it?
That's what we can use. I mean, actually on my list.
We're happy to look for it, but I don't know what we're looking for exactly.
We, thanks to Samantha, have a awesome municipal specialist, and he just knows code like crazy.
Yeah, we could.
It's like my psychopath.
That's actually on my list. Can we go back to this, and then we'll talk about that? Because she just skipped over. That's a completely different subject. So.
No, I thought we were just looking at maybe using that for the coverage, because we don't, they're not gonna fund the whole project.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, that's a different, different thing. I, there's no way we can use that for this, because we don't have anything like this in our inventory.
We have playground equipment.
This is not playground equipment.
That's why I was curious about how it was awarded.
No, we did absolutely say in the first meeting that I would get ahold of Steve.
Yeah. We, we would get ahold. We were talking about, at that, we were talking about, um, because we have an ADA path, if we can use that to add to the ADA path.
Yeah, too.
Because we have that in our.
And he said he did not see where it would be a problem. He said, ask him to forgive us. He said.
That does sound like Steve.
And as long as it was used for the park, he did not feel like it would be an issue.
And who is Steve?
He's an attorney.
He's an attorney. So he would interpret the, that's not from Samantha, you get?
Well, absolutely. It's just, like I said, he kinda specializes in municipal.
Here, I got a list. You can come over here.
Cora, that's not necessary. I mean, can we? We've all been pitching in, so I don't, I just don't think that's necessary.
Can we, because the, the impact fee actually was part of my list and had nothing to do with this. So can we see?
Turn it off?
Oh, no. You guys can, is it still playing more, or is it?
No, it's done.
Red.
It, it was, hadn't finished. It is, well, maybe it's repeating.
I thought, is it that long of a video, or is it repeating? Okay.
Yeah, just.
I thought, wow, that's got a lot more stuff going on it than I thought. So you're wanting to finish your, so, so I guess the first thing is, is if we move forward with this, if you guys will give approval for us to move forward with, because right now, we still have to, before we can even do anything, we still have to reapply and get them to say yes to us. And then the, um, National Fitness Center, they gave the grant, gave a grant of thirty thousand dollars to Hall. They're willing to transfer it over to us, but, but again, we still have to apply.
Right, okay.
Because it all has to be moved over to our name. And then we're also gonna have some updates, because we're no longer using the Minrobian, or the Hall numbers and things. We'll be using ours. So there will be some things that need to be done and tweaked to fix those. Um, so I guess I'm asking if that is something that you guys would approve for us to move forward to do?
So you're saying that basically you have earmarked, you probably have a hundred and eighty thousand of the 250?
If they wanted to build, if we wanna build the big one. Yeah, I want the big one, right? If we want the big one.
The two-sided one, right?
Huh?
The two-sided.
The seventy-six by thirty-eight.
And one of the things that we did ask, um, Tricia from Morgan County Board of Health is, was there a time limit? Because we said, what if we start working on it, and we have eighty thousand dollars that we have to, to fundraise for, we start working on it, and it takes us, because you know, a lot of grants, you have a year to spend your money or whatever. If we start working on it, and we're at a year, and we don't have all our money, are we gonna lose that grant? She said, no, that we would not. As long as they know what we're working on, and that we're working towards it, that we would not lose that money. So that it would be left in a holding for us.
I'll negotiate if we proceed with this.
I can't second that, can I?
No, I wasn't.
Carol, you're enjoying that quite a bit.
Oh, good.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
We're all getting slap happy.
It's long.
It's a long meeting. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we will move forward with that. Um, so the impact fee that we were talking about, we, we, you and I talked about, Tammy, was that we have, since we, because we have to use what we have in our inventory. And since we have an ADA path that goes from our parking lot to the, the playground, if we can use that impact fee to continue to expand that ADA path into, to the playground, into the shelter house, since we already have an ADA path in the inventory.
So you're wanting approval on that?
Well, is that?
I'm fine with that.
Does that sound right to you?
I'm, I'm good with that.
What's up? So the impact money that we get, we can only use that for things that are already in our, in our inventory. We have an ADA path, so it goes from the parking lot into the park. We're wondering if, since we already have that in our inventory, if we can use that impact fee to put another ADA path that leads from that ADA path to the shelter house and to the playground.
So Steve said, when I asked him, and this is, I'm trying desperately to find the email, he said basically that the, the thought process of extending the ADA, all that, would not be something that, in his experience, that they've ever argued. And he's never seen anybody argue using an impact fee for ADA, anything.
Okay.
That was the gist, wouldn't you say? So can we put out bids or quotes, whatever it is we need to get those? Have you guys as a board decided what you would want to prioritize? As far as that, because you have, what, ninety thousand right now? I don't think you wanna empty that.
No. Um, we, we agreed that the ADA path was, um, a priority, because we want people to be able to get to the shelter and to the playground. And, and right now, it's a grass field.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that.
I, I agree with you. We do so.
So you're recommending, what, asphalt path to go from the parking lot area all the way over to the?
Well, that, people are using it as a drive, but it's not, because our center thing is down. But that is actually our ADA, the start of our, that's our ADA path to the, to the park entrance. So it would go from that to the shelter and then to the playground.
I'm in favor of that. So I'm.
Who did the work for you before in the paving?
We had a hard time getting.
We had three different bids. I thought they were all too high.
And we had a hard time getting anybody to begin with, because, and everybody said it was because they were just busy at that time. So.
Well, E and B Paving said, when we redid all the stuff here, that they now have hot asphalt right here at county line and, um, behind Ted's, that new place. So we definitely wanna make sure E and B has an opportunity, because they're close. Okay. Mary Ann, can you, is that something that you could do for us?
Um, I would have to meet someone on site and see how much.
I can meet you on site, on site.
Let me know when.
Line it up with Travis, if he'll come. Travis McPeak? Or whoever he sends, and the three of you guys can go together. I think that would be, instead of you two meeting, and then.
Well, I was just thinking, we, that, that I could tell.
Because she will know where.
Probably two or three bids, but I don't know if it's one.
Gotcha. Okay. Yep, you're right. We need more than one.
Oh, we didn't have to make, we didn't have to proceed with a motion on that?
Oh, I'm open to them.
Huh?
I'm open to them.
I, I did make a motion. You go ahead and proceed.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, we, as you know, or, maybe I'm reminding you of this. We've been working with, um, aquatic design on the, our wetland area, and they've not gotten anywhere as far as planning our wildlife area and making it look nice. Um, so we went in and we talked with them, and one of the things that they have suggested is, because they had someone from the Morgan County Soil and Water Conservation Agency come out and look at that area, and it is, um, all basically invasive plants, which I think we all pretty much knew that.
Mm-hmm.
So they are suggesting, before they put any, um, seeds or anything down, because they said the native plants will not allow anything else to grow, that the native, the invasive will just take everything over, they are suggesting that we do a prescribed burn, where we're wanting that to happen in the fall. So it will kill those invasives back, and then they'll go in and put in the, um, the, the wild flowers, the native plants that we're wanting. So, um, we are hoping to get with the fire, um, the fire station and have them come out, what, in, it'll probably be late October, early November, to do a prescribed burn, and, and kill off those, those invasives and take care of some of that. I don't know if that's something that you'll want to put out and let people know that that's what we're doing when we do that.
Have you checked to make sure that you can do the control burn form?
We, we've been told by item that we could do anything we wanted there, because it wasn't a, it's not a significant, it's not a large enough space for, I mean, of course.
Have you done the D and F? Supposed to ditch more than.
We have a resort, yeah, from D and F. They told us we could close it up if we want it, because it's not a big enough area to actually be a significant wetland. But we decided to, um, make it into a nice kind of pretty edu- maybe educational area.
I would just double-check with the county about control burns.
Okay.
Fire department would know.
There's a spring that feeds that.
Yeah.
Probably control burn, and probably the safest place we can do one, because it's so wet, but.
But you're right, the fire department will pull those permits.
Yeah. We're gonna get with the fire department and, and work with them.
Well, they do training, and they have that brush truck. It's probably, they'll consider it a training exercise, I would imagine.
And it's like I said, we'll do this.
He was here.
Yeah, they left.
He bailed after two and a half hours.
Yeah, we're gonna do that, um, late October, early November, when it's.
More in Canaveral, we in Rose, Steve, Ben want, they'll have there first.
Lauren's gonna have a field day over there.
No, what, uh, it's, it's all short, the grass, you know, grassy area, and what we use is the propane torches, you just go down through there.
Um, so I am working with the, the festival board for the festival, and, um, there's a couple of things. We, the park board is, um, working at the kids' zone, and we are kinda taking control of the schedule of the kids' zone. If any of you guys would like to sign up and work some time at the kids' zone, that's basically making sure kids don't get trampled at the bounce house. You are more than welcome to sign up and, and do that. Um, it's gonna be fun time.
I'm really bummed to hear you guys are gonna have a really big turnout this year, but I have a wedding out of town.
I, I, I hear last year, the teenagers caused some, the older kids, not necessarily teenagers, older kids caused some problems in the bounce house. So we'll have to get in there and use some teacher voice on them. But if you guys wanna sign up, let me know. Um, we've got time that you can slide in there and work the kids' zone. Um, and we are having a pie eating contest that I'm in charge of. And they want someone from the police department, the fire department, one of the town boards, and the festival board. And then, um, the, I just talked to the fire chief, and he said he's got someone from, um, AMA who's gonna, who's gonna do it. So he's already got a fireman for me, or EMA, he's got a fireman and an EMA. He suggested, and I said, I was gonna try to get one of you guys to do the pie eating contest. He suggested Ryan. He said Ryan really loved pie, and that he would do this pie eating contest.
I think it's a good idea.
Like, nobody's gonna nominate. I think we need a motion and a vote on that.
I think that's a perfect candidate.
I think I can make that motion. What time is the pie eating contest, so he doesn't get out of this?
Saturday at three.
Oh, yeah, I think you're available. I'll call your mom.
Well, I think it's gonna be chocolate. We were hoping for meringue pies from the Heavenly Bakery in town. I know I'm not saying that right.
Heavenly Helpings.
What was it?
Heavenly Helpings.
Heavenly Helpings. We were, we're hoping that she will go make, and we will do meringue pies, but.
That would be more interesting.
Still waiting to hear back. You'll do it? Alright, okay.
Ryan's gonna do this, please.
Well, so I do have to hit him up on a police officer.
I have a class reunion. I'm not gonna be there either.
But that's it. I'm done. Thank you, guys.
Hey, question. I mean, you guys have probably already thought of this, but the ADA path, and you wanna do a trail around the park, correct? Is a trail not also an ADA?
It's, yes, it'll be ADA too.
So that you'll be able to keep extending and, okay.
That's what we're hoping that the motion we can. Hopefully that solution we can.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Work on that, yeah. Well, thank you. I'm wondering if the ADA trail needs to include to the portlet.
The portlet should. It should. It should.
Because we get a, we do get a handicap portlet too, so it doesn't do us any good to have it.
They can't get to it. Can you not just put it like at the corner of the parking lot or anything?
Well, the parking lot has such limited space that we're afraid because up there is taking up our parking.
They'll knock it down.
We'll knock it down. Or steal it because that's, that's been a problem with some of our county parks. They ended up having to build permanent toilets because they were still in the portlets that was going down. Put them in the back of trucks, taking them home.
Because the old house doesn't work anymore.
Hey, my dad lives across the street. If you want to put a Ring camera on our poles.
So we could see if someone's messing with our. I think we probably have neighbors over there that are probably keeping a pretty close eye.
Ryan, were you happy to also? Thank you. Allow Ring cameras. That's how I ended up babysitting and we were neighbors. Get that in the paper, Jerry.
So I will entertain a motion to head home.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Only joy I get in my job.